Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, May 23, 2016. At 5:45, we held an executive session to do some collective bargaining. We'll say that we did reach an agreement with the Superior Officers Union on a retroactive contract for the current year we're in, one year, and going forward, a three-year contract. So, and we also signed some side agreements with the HEA. So, we are now back in open session, and please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I think as everybody is aware, especially the folks on this side of the room, we had an election last week, and as a result, we have some folks, obviously, that got elected, which is great, and the town clerks now needs to officially swear them in. Well, I will say, my two fellow selectmen have already been sworn in, but I'm gonna make them do it again, just for the photo op and for some folks that are here. So, to everybody who was elected at last week's town meeting, please come forward. And the town clerk. Yep, you go over there. You're on TV. This is a big event, you know. Congratulations, by the way. Okay, we'll move on to weekly briefing. Just want to point out to everybody that the Money Creek Bridge did open last week, as advertised, I think it was Friday at 3 o'clock. I heard a rumor that the town administrator is the first vehicle of any type to get over the bridge.
That rumor's true.
He was there waiting, so that link, that important link between Chatham and Harwich is now back open. So, all those detours that people have suffered through since last fall should be over with.
Only since January.
What's that?
Only since January.
Okay, but I mean, if you had to deal with it, it wasn't fun, I guess, right? Anybody else to weekly briefing? Okay, we'll move on to public comment and announcements. Jamie, you have something exciting to tell us this evening?
Jamie Goodwin, station manager, for those of you who don't know me. Today, right now, we are going live from this room.
We are live.
To everybody in Harwich who so chooses to watch this meeting right now. This was a long time in the coming. I just want to thank a couple of people that helped me get this put together. Jill Mason, for one, who was trying to get this done before she retired. She didn't quite get there, so I had to pick up the pieces and finish it for her. I want to thank Chris for helping me get a lot of this planned. Foster, Carolyn Carey, everybody in the accounting department with Andy helped me pay the bills when Munis wouldn't let me pay them. Caleb has been doing a great job. This is all-new equipment, all-new software. It works totally differently than what we're used to. So, if you're watching this at home or for the next couple of weeks, just bear with us, because it's a little bit of a learning curve, and we're trying to figure it out. And hopefully, I can get some equipment upgraded at the community center, and we can start doing a lot of interesting things and cover more meetings and stuff like that, so.
Great, so now, like I said, people sit at home, and when they see their topic is about to come up, they can get in their car and drive there.
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
That's a great accomplishment, thank you.
Right, we still hope that everybody, you know, shows up for these meetings, but if you can't, it's nice that you can now watch them live.
And you will be showing them on tape after that, right?
Right, we'll continue, we'll continue for the people that are used to watching it the following morning. We air it at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesdays and 7:00 p.m. on Tuesdays, and then we, you know, pepper it in throughout the week and the weekend, so, yeah.
All right, good.
All right, thank you.
Chris?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, you know, at Department Heads, I say to people that we need to get X, Y, and Z done, and I just want to thank Jamie for being so diligent. I gave her until June 30th to give her a little margin of error, but it's nice that she got it done in advance, and I just want to say personally, thank you for your efforts, and it wouldn't have happened without your diligence.
Thank you, and we've been going live here and there from this room, just to test it, but this is like, this is the night to go live, so.
That's not why the glass broke in the door, is it?
No, no, I had nothing to do with the glass breaking in the door.
All right, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, okay, let's move on. Any other public comments and announcements? Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda, Janelle.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve minutes from April 19, 2016, regular session, and April 25, 2016, regular session. Approve the application for common victor's license for the Mad Minnow Bar and Kitchen at 554 Main Street, Route 28, in Harwich Port. Approve the renewal of junk dealer's license for Monahan and Company. Approve 2016 taxi limo license renewals, and approve request of funds from the Caleb Chase gift account in the amount of $700.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented discussion. Here you go, we'll put it to a vote, Allison, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote, thank you. On the old business, we have had, I think, two presentations on the Dennisport West Harwich, Route 28, road improvement project. Last week, we had some, a young lady from VHB in, the project engineer, to talk to us. We did not list it as a discussion and possible vote last week, so we couldn't vote to submit that project to the Highway Department, if you will, or Mass.
Mass DOT.
Yeah, Mass DOT, just to see if they're interested in that project, so we need to do that at this point in time. So, if someone would like to make a motion, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the submission of the project needs form for the Dennisport West Harwich, Route 28 roadway improvement project.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to submit the project need form as presented in your packet discussion. Anybody? Here you go, we'll put it to a vote, Allison, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote, thank you. Two-year town administrator's contract extension, I believe, is on here as an error. We had voted that previously, and we're going to later on talk about, not tonight, but later on, talk about the potential of a mid-year performance review or something like that. So, we've already done this, I think, the minutes reflect that, so. We'll move on to new business. We had a request by the Real Estate and Open Space Committee to transfer parcels from the custody of the selection of the Conservation Commission. This is a letter that came to us, they took an action. Is anybody here from the Open Space Committee, by the way? Nobody, okay. This is something we would not act on this evening, it's just, it's something that's sent to us. My suggestion to this board is, once we reorganize, which will be next week, and subsequent to that, we'll get our assignments as far as what liaisons, what committees we were lazy on to, and whoever ends up with real estate and open space and/or conservation, my feeling is you should sit down with them and the town administrator and understand why they're recommending these parcels. If you just read what's here, and Tommy Gagnon left, but one of the parcels is actually the shooting range, which I understand is not what they're asking for, but in the documentation, that's what they're asking for. So, these things need to get clarified, we need to understand, you know, what would motivate them to do it, and then we need to see if we agree with moving forward with them, so. Everybody got those in their packet, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, just dispense with that at the moment, unless somebody else has something they want to talk about on it.
Just a simple question, if indeed we do do that with that property, what we probably should do is have a planning board judge how many lots that would have allowed houses to be built on, because then we can use that to subtract our needs from wastewater, uh, needs.
Which property are you talking about?
Any of it, there's 20, every one of them, whether it's one lot or two or three.
Yeah, that's part of the process.
But if...
Yeah, I do think, Mr. Chairman, the one thing I'd like to do, anytime a property changes hands or changes use, I think it's always good due diligence under the procurement law, that they encourage you to send out to different departments to make sure we don't inadvertently kind of hurt ourselves, and I think in this circumstance, if we do have a shooting range on it, the other one I'm kind of sensitive to is, I think some of those areas were fairly close to some of the recharge sites that we were talking about, and I would like to just make sure we do a good due diligence, that if there's something we don't want to have be conservation, once it goes to conservation, it's virtually impossible to take it out, which isn't a bad thing, but I just think you need to know going in, eyes open, that we're going to do that, that that would be basically into perpetuity.
Yep, okay, all right, so more to come on that one. Chris, would you just get back to the real estate and open space folks and tell them that, we'll probably see it on TV, but tell them that we will take this up at a later date, and look forward to some nice discussions about it.
Yes.
Okay, next, we had a document before us, which is the employee handbook. Did Anita leave? Is that what she was passing out to everybody?
No.
No, it wasn't, okay. The employee handbook, which was, or, excuse me, committee handbook, which was recently updated, and we voted to accept that revision last week, with one provision, and that is that with our procedure for remote participation, that is, if anybody remembers, Angelo spent some time in Hilton Head or someplace this winter, and ended up calling in on four occasions. I mean, it worked out very well with Skype and, you know, that type of thing, but we didn't, we, our, our policy says that you can participate remotely in an audio portion only, so we wanted to revise that, or need to revise that to reflect video, if you will. The state attorney general, thank you, Michael, for giving me that, but they, you know, allowed you to do that as well, so. We went through and took our existing policy for procedure for remote participation and marked it up to include the possibility or concept of using video, and we need to adopt this at some point, so we can put it in this committee handbook, so we can get these committee handbooks out into people's hands. The Board of Selectmen does have a policy that says that when we're doing policies and procedures, that we would do at least two readings of those. We also had the ability to waive that, that requirement, if we so desire, but it must be unanimous approval of waiving the requirement. So, I hope everybody had a chance to read this. I don't know if anybody has any comments in particular to the policy, it was just marking up to include the video aspect of it, so, I don't know.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept and adopt the remote participation policy amendment as written in our packet.
Well, let's back up a second, I'm just trying to find everybody at least comfortable, first of all, with that policy for remote participation. We have to go back, and we actually have to take our, our policy on, on adopting policies, and dispense with, dispense with the requirement for two readings, is the way we'd have to do it.
So, the first motion would be to, by unanimous consent.
Dispense with the requirement, yes.
I just want to do, before you go into that, just to let people know that, actually, I had a meeting today with Foster, I thought he was going to try to show up our IT director, and we are a little bit concerned that if we receive multiple requests from multiple locations to do it, we may be able to accomplish that pretty easily here, so people can see, but we may not if there's two or three different locations. So, one of the things, I think there may be some limitations to what we're able to do. I think when Angelo was away, if that laptop was just turned around, then people could see, and he could see, and that probably would be sufficient under this to comply, and I think that's what the intent is, but just, we, if we have, if we get requests for five laptops, it may be hard for us to do that, if they're all have to be preloaded with the necessary software, as well as, in some locations, if people have a bad internet single, signal, that they may fade in and out, and I think there needs to be a clear understanding that if the video fades in and out or becomes not functional, that we have to switch to the telephone capabilities. So, as long as there's those caveats, I don't think that needs to change the policy, but at least operationally, we will have to do some pre-planning to make sure that that works.
I actually spent an hour and a half from Nanjing, China, a couple of years ago, calling in here, and it worked out just fine, but...
Yeah, we've, I think we've been trying to do it from a video basis for years, and Foster was finally able to put everything together, you know, a couple of months ago, and I think that was a big help.
Yeah, and I think that Chris's point is, that's fine for the Board of Selectmen's meeting, if we have one individual.
Sure.
But say there were three meetings the same night, and we had, you know, six requests to do it, it gets a little challenging, but we'll have to figure that out when it happens. Michael?
I think, Chris, too, the state law says if available.
Right.
So, I think we're covered on the...
And they can always just resort, or, you know, go back to just audio.
And the reason for doing the policy this way, which is allowed in our policies, is because we really have to get that committee handbook out.
Well, that's the idea.
You know.
Okay, so...
Just on the committee handbook, too, I was kind of disappointed that, going through the summaries of the different departments, that there was probably about a third of them that weren't in there. So, we did bring that up at Department Heads meeting. I thought that the Department Heads should step to the plate, some of these volunteer committees, so we, I know we've got a trickle of them in.
Yep.
So, we are trying to fill that, and I think we can populate that as we go, as we get the summary of what the departments do with the board's permission, but I thought that was a little bit, I was a little embarrassed that we shouldn't put a document out that has a third of the, a third of the board's not...
I would say, I would say, assuming, assuming we vote this this evening, to put this in, this, you know, audio/video remote participation, that within the next week, we expect those handbooks to be available to people.
To be available, yep.
So, whatever you get done between now and then. So, okay, Janelle, are you clear what we need here, are you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
Thank you.
I think.
Go ahead, try it.
Okay, so, I move that we vote to waive, what reading, no, I'm not clear, what, what readings?
Michael, why don't you, why don't you...
Yeah, what readings are we waving?
The policy states, here's the policy, and the policy states that we're supposed to do readings, public readings, a full change of policy.
So, in theory, we do it tonight, we do it next week, and then we'll adopt it.
So, Mr. Chair, I vote to waive, I vote that we move to waive readings and vote to approve the amendment to the remote participation policy. We do it one motion, right?
That's fine.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to waive the readings and adopt the, let me just get it here, adopt the revised remote participation policy. Discussion. Here you go, we'll put it to a vote, Allison, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote, thank you. Okay, so, we'll look forward to having those handbooks available in a week, okay?
We need another vote.
That just made it, that just made it so you can now vote to approve it.
No, 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 we did it one motion.
Okay.
The motion was, read the motion again, Michael, please.
Vote was to waive the readings and vote to approve...
You did it one motion.
Angelo was confused, too, I mean, I thought we were doing, I thought we were doing the one and then the other.
Would you like to revote it?
No.
All right, just giving you the opportunity, if you'd like to, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, takes us to Town Administrator's Report, and continued discussion of Town Planner position options. I see, ah, Chairman of the Planning Board is here, and the Town Planner here, how appropriate, good.
Yeah, I wanted to, in terms of this, Mr. Chairman, last week, I had introduced the concept under Town Administrator's Report, just to say that Dave Spitz has done an outstanding job for the town, and he is, he is departing us. And any, anytime we have a departure, it gives us an opportunity to look at the organization and see if there's things that we can do. I think that one of the things that David did was kind of expand the capabilities in that department, and what I'd like to do is try to capture that, and so what I've laid out here is, are the two options. One would be that the, we would have, continue to have an assistant town planner, and whether we change that name or not, I'm not yet totally set on that, but to have, I think we need to have a full-time assistant town planner, because there are so many different areas that, that are covered in there, but to have also, take the opportunity to have the assistant town administrator who was, was not available at our last meeting to discuss this, but it's been, it's been the vision, at least since I've been here, and I think even the vision prior to my arrival, that we have a little bit more centralized control, where the town administrator right now is responsible for 22 different departments, and that span of control is really kind of a difficult process to have a lot of day-to-day interaction. And under this proposal, it would be to have the assistant town administrator act as the community development director, to help guide the, the process upstairs in the community development departments. So, I think that kind of option one is to look at that and see if we can strengthen that area, and not only would the assistant planner do planning, but also do some work in special projects, and do some work in what I would call kind of larger-scale organization, kind of strategic planning concepts, so to try to expand that, that vision. And then, the second option is, and in some ways, probably the easier option, but I don't think it would necessarily improve the organization going forward, is to retain the position in how we currently do business. I think there's an opportunity to improve, but if we don't want to take that opportunity, and we just want to recruit a town planner, that opportunity exists. And I did have a conversation with, with David, I want to just publicly say that, you know, this wasn't done in a vacuum, I, we had a couple sessions in which we chatted to get a, a good sense, so not only with David, but also with Jim, the, on the planning board's side, to see what the needs of the department were. So, based upon those conversations, what you see in front of you, I think, is one that they're in, that they at least think it makes some sense, and, so, I just wanted to at least lay that out. I know that there was a request to start to dig up some information in terms of, I said, I always like to do things, if we can do it, where it would be revenue-neutral, so if we can try to keep the, the dollars approximately the same, I'd like to try to do that, just looking out for the taxpayers, but I'd like to get a sense from the board what direction you'd like me to pursue, and if it's option one, then we'll start getting the, the costs and the potential recruitment costs of trying to hire an assistant town planner, as opposed to hiring a town planner. So, I'm kind of looking for a little policy direction tonight, in terms of formally, which direction would the board like me to pursue.
Okay, one of our questions or comments last week, when Charlene wasn't here, was we wanted to hear from Charlene, since she would, you know, be the one that taking on a big part of this role, so, Charlene, I know you've had a little time to think about this, but what's your feedback on this one?
I'm, I think either option is viable. I'm happy to do whatever I can to assist in whatever role that is, so whichever way, I'm, I'm good with.
Okay, do you see, you don't see a preference as far as either efficiency or, you know, preferability in your point?
I think from an efficiency standpoint, probably the, the community director and a, and a, an assistant planner would probably be the preferable one, but I can also still see it working if it was just the town planner. I think I would have probably more of a role either way, with assisting the second floor in, in trying to move forward in some of the things that they've been trying and wanting to do over the last couple of years.
Okay, all right, and can we hear from our friends out here?
Sure.
Jim?
Yeah, I mean, taking a look at this and at the options that Chris has developed, and again, he developed it in consultation with both David and myself, I think I would be more in favor of option one, which is the community development form of organization, with Charlene sort of heading up the community development department, and then also having a sort of mid-level planner, whether we call it assistant planner or whatever, you know, sort of working, doing a lot of the day-to-day planning work. I think that, based on Charlene's background and Charlene's ability, I think this could work very well. My only concern would be the workload that Charlene is undertaking with this additional responsibility, but what I think is important for the coming year, is I think that this is an option that is really worth trying, and I think could really improve the services given by the town, and I think during this first year, we would just have to monitor it, to see what that workload really was, and to see whether or not it was working with Charlene as sort of fulfilling both roles, or whether or not the workload is going to merit the consideration of a new position.
Yeah, I think so much of this depends on who that individual is, that shows up to be the assistant town planner, because...
Yeah, that would, that's going to tell us a lot.
Obviously, he needs to write a job description and whatnot, but until you see that person in the position, it's hard to know how it's all going to work, Chris.
I do realize that not everyone has a chance to go through, and since we're live, I want to make sure I put this out there. The only way this works is to have a part-time person be able to come into the administration office to try to take some of that workload off, so we would do kind of a work study, workflow study in the office to see, are there certain things that right now Charlene is doing? As an example, we do some of these salary surveys, I mean, it's great that Charlene's doing that, quite honestly, that's probably the work that we could have someone else be doing, so we would hire a clerical person at 19 hours. What's the magic to 19 hours is, once you hit 20, you're obligated to pay health insurance, so we would target 19 or below. So, the idea would be to look at how we do things in our office, take 19 hours of work, not necessarily just away from Charlene, but take it away, and then either give some to Ann and some to Sandy, and then they would divvy their work up to this clerical person. So, the idea would be to try to get a better, a better flow, where we're assigning work to people who are capable of accomplishing it at a more appropriate salary. So, we are looking at ways that we would reduce the workload in the office to have this be successful, is, is the goal.
Okay, thank you, Jim. And David's the outgoing planner, the one with all the wisdom here, because you're outgoing, right? What are your thoughts?
I want you to keep track of the point that we have day-to-day planning needs, and we have some more comprehensive, and we really need to keep a focus on that, whether it's East Harwich or several other examples. The one good thing about this proposal is, I think it'll make administration and planning have closer working relationship, I think you need that. I think with Jim representing the planning board and with Charlene's background, I think you can really make this work, so I'm happy with that direction.
Okay, so, Chris, with the next step, assuming the board was in favor of this, the next step be coming up the job description, the position descriptions, and looking at the financial impact of it, and bringing it back to us, I guess?
Yeah, I'd like to do a little bit of form and function, does it make sense to have Charlene be named the, the town planner, or call her a community development director, you know, that title? So, I'd like to kind of look and see what titles would work. I did this when we were down at the, when I was the acting water superintendent, and I learned a lesson that we tried to hire a water director, no one knew what that was, so we re-advertized it as water superintendent, and we got a lot of people that applied for it. So, there is a lot to be said in a name by any other, so I'd like to do a little bit of due diligence, just to make sure that we advertise in, in a way in which we're going to be successful.
Okay, I got a sense of the board, Angelo?
I think it makes a lot, excuse me, a lot of sense, but we've tried something similar to this, probably eight or 10 years ago, when we had the assistant town manager, town administrator, working with all the departments, I believe you were even here then, and that seemed to work very well, but there may very well be information on, and job descriptions already available from a number of years ago, and that, I thought, worked pretty well at that point, and you...
Yeah, we'll certainly look at that, absolutely.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure the timing, whether it was seven years or 10, but it's in that kind of...
A while back, yeah.
Yeah, it's a while back.
I remember a year ago, when we talked about the assistant town administrator's job, we had, we had doled out, we had, thought we were doling out Department Heads at that point. You had, you had said you were going to split the Department Heads, so in this, it says to, you know, to continue that process. Are we talking about removing half of the town assistant town administrators' responsibilities that we already had, and repositioning?
Well, the, the original vision that, that I worked out when I started, in my mind, and again, what I think of has to be translated into policy, so this is really just my initial thoughts, was that, and I think we, we did a little bit of this with, when Julie was on board, that if you take community development and community services, community services being the community center and the council on aging, recreation, those, I think there was about 12 departments that would fall within that, but only about a third of the budget. So, my original thought was to kind of head in a direction where we have community development and community services directly underneath the assistant town administrator. I would retain the public safety, which would be police, fire, and then also public works, I would retain that, and then have a utilities division with the idea that initially, it would be water, and then as wastewater develops, that would stay within the administrative. So, the idea was, how do we get from the span of control for 1 and 20, or 1 and 22, to close to 1 and 10? And it's kind of under that umbrella that, I've talked about that in the past, in fairness, Michael, it has been a while since I've talked about that, but that's kind of what I see as a potential for operational, better operational control, and that doesn't preclude, when, when Julie was hired, we did do that, where that was actually put into place, and Department Heads, I think, really liked it, because they got more of the day-to-day administrative support, and I think that if we head in that direction, I could see a lot of positives that would come out of that, and that would allow me to go and focus on utility... and that would allow me to go and focus on utilities, focus on, uh, public works, and focus on public safety, where right now I try to maintain that generalist approach. And it's, quite honestly, it's, it's very hard with the span of control having one and twenty-two.
So to follow that, I, I thought that that's the direction we were heading in. So now are we adding two more positions? So we're gonna add a clerical and a part-time planner to replace David and put Charlene more in that role? Cause that was the direction, exactly what you described is, is where we were going with the hiring of Charlene. So now, I guess what I, what I need to see is a, some sort of flow chart, who's gonna do what, and what extra it's gonna cost the town, or save the town.
Right, I guess just theoretically here, i- if, if there's eighty thousand dollars and we have the town planner, the town planner position would convert to an assistant town planner, again, just for discussion, or staff planner. Let's say we're able to fill that at fifty thousand or sixty thousand, then we would use the twenty thousand to fund the part-time, uh, person in the administration office. So salary-wise, under that scenario, if we're able to accomplish that, it would be virtually the same. I'd like to give myself a little bit of latitude. If we need five or ten thousand dollars, one way or another, to do that, probably more on the high side, I'd rather make sure that we're able to recruit somebody that's able to do it. But I guess I'm really thinking that in this whole reorg, it would only be a half-person that would be added, because the planner position would be converted to a, a staff planner or an assistant planner.
La- lastly, um, now that you're gonna go in this direction, we're gonna have a meeting with the people that work upstairs and talk about the reorg. I know the last reorg didn't go over so well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, let's bring, let's bring it back as far as, um, a little organization chart, um, what the cost impacts are, and then the position descriptions, we can go from there.
Yeah, that's gonna take a little bit, obviously, to put that together, but probably in the next couple of weeks, we'll, we'll see what we can do.
You know, I fully expect to be a hole from the time David leaves. You leave when in July what? How many days is that from now? You counting?
Six and a half weeks.
Six and a half weeks, okay. Oh, you're counting the weeks now, okay. You'll be down to days pretty soon, but.
Four, four hours.
It'll go by quickly, it'll go by quickly, and I just suspect, expect we'll have some sort of hole here where we don't get things put in place.
Yeah, in terms of the hole, and I did have this in the memo, it would be my initial reaction would be to have Charlene kind of come upstairs and, and provide some day-to-day support. Uh, I would like to look, it, it depends, if, if the reorg is gonna be a six-month process, then I probably would say maybe we hire somebody, an outside consultant to come in and, and kind of help us manage the department while we do that work. If it's gonna be closer to two months, then, and there's not a heck of a lot of planning-type work going on, then maybe we try to suffer through and, and see if Charlene can, can kind of give some direction while we put this into place. So that's kind of the thought in, in terms of that. In terms of the timeline, that will kind of be determined as we put together some of this info.
Janelle?
Uh, just actually to, to, um, the planning department, I noticed that we're losing one. We have one resignation from, or not renewing. Do you still have a quorum?
Well, actually, I think we have two.
Planning board, yes.
Planning board.
We have two, uh, who have decided that they don't want reappointment.
Okay.
Um, and so we have two alternates, but I think what we would like to do is, you know, hopefully get people applying to fulfill those two positions on the full board. And of course, the, the alternates are eligible to apply for those positions also.
Have either alternate expressed interest in being full members?
Uh, not to me directly, but we haven't had any sort of personal contact since it was recognized that we're gonna have two vacancies. We do have a planning board meeting li- uh, tomorrow night, so I can ask that question tomorrow night.
Yeah, it'd be a great thing to do, just see if they're interested.
I'll do that.
Yeah, yeah. Angelo?
I think Michael makes a very good point. Um, it's gonna take a while to put this all pieces together, but I think maybe chatting with the people, uh, upstairs in the various departments about what the potential plans might be and starting that now would be, could be very helpful, rather than waiting and saying, here's, here's, it's finished.
I think once this board says that's a sense, the direction we wanna get to the town administrator, I think that will get put in. They should get put into place, so. But we don't wanna do that if we're sitting here saying that we don't, don't wanna go in that direction.
Yeah, it's a different conversation. If we're maintaining status quo, then there's not much of a conversation to have. If we are gonna pursue making a change, then we'll certainly get them involved.
Yep. Okay, any else? Okay, so the census to move forward with the recommendation of the town administrator on this.
On option one.
Yep, and we'll look forward to, um, the details as they become available.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just.
Thank you.
Thank you, and let us know, please, about, uh, whether your members wanna move up or not, your alternates wanna move up.
Yeah, like I said, I'll ask the question tomorrow night, and then, you know, report back to you as to what their response is.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
What time is your meeting tomorrow?
Uh, six thirty.
Thank you.
Next is the, Chris, the FY seventeen Bronsvil County Fuel Oil bid.
Yeah, I, I don't, this is one of those ones that's underneath the threshold of fifty thousand dollars. I don't think we'll be spending altogether that much money. Not too many buildings actually use the fuel oil, so this is just more informational. Uh, the bid came in very good, so obviously as the oil prices are decreasing, it's, uh, helping, having a beneficial effect on our, uh, on our budget. I had, uh, three other things. Uh, one is, I'm in the process of, um, updating my procurement officer, uh, status. I, I have the certification through the state. I'm, I'm gonna maintain that certification as the, uh, chief procurement officer by charter. I, I think it's important that I maintain that certification. Uh, so I'm having a little bit of a trouble because a lot of the classes have filled up, so I, I gotta find some, uh, alternative ways. But I, I will be out of the office a little bit, probably in the next thirty to sixty days, trying to get those classes squared away and, and maintain my, uh, certification. I was toying with not doing that, but, um, we have Carolyn Carey is certified, uh, Bob, uh, Bob Cafarelli, the town engineer, doesn't have the certification, yet he does a lot of the bid stuff. So I'd rather have somebody that has the certification kind of oversee the, the bid materials. Also, uh, we have been doing, and Charlene and, um, Paula have done an outstanding job where we've had some, uh, Maya, uh, management training. I actually had a, uh, I did two performance reviews today with the, uh, the, the fire chief and the, uh, finance director, so those will be coming before the board, uh, but it was interesting that both, both of them kind of commented on having some of the Maya management training as being very beneficial. So just, you know, how to deal with people in a more constructive, uh, environment, how to deal with difficult people. I think one of the last ones was, uh, inter-office cooperation. So to some of the points about how do we work better as an organization when departments have different missions, uh, we've, we've actually tried to, uh, do some training in that regards, and, and it has been good. The training is generally an hour or two hours, so we try to minimize the lost productivity, if you will, but to, uh, try to get those training elements in. And then the last, uh, item that I had, I, I guess maybe there's, maybe one more, but I did put in, hopefully I put into the package, uh, the draft selectman's letter, uh, that we received from the Pleasant Bay Alliance. And I know the Pleasant Bay Alliance had asked to, uh, to come in, and I don't know if the, the board, I think on June sixth, we have, uh, the, we have a report that's due, relevant to the two oh eight plan for our, uh, it's actually Wastewater Management Authority, I think is the, the formal name. And, uh, David Young is putting together that material for the board's consideration. Uh, and we, I think we have slated with him for June sixth, uh, to do that. Obviously with the reorg next week, it may not be the ideal time, but I was thinking that maybe that would be a, uh, opportunity to have Carol come in and the Pleasant Bay Alliance to, to do that work.
What's that?
Oh, is it the summer schedule?
Yeah, there's June twentieth, I think it's the first day we don't meet. June, it's towards the end of June that we don't meet.
Yeah, I think it's towards the end of.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't start, it, it's the day before summer starts or something like that, I remember, so, yeah.
So we'll, um.
But it makes sense to have them in on the same night, so.
Yeah, just so it could be a night about wastewater compliance issues, I guess, just to, to have that common, common thought.
Yep.
So I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that Carol did follow up with that and that you guys have that.
Any else?
Are we gonna take up that letter sometime from them?
Yeah, we need to take it up before or during, you know, when she gets here.
I mean, if you wanna have it on for the thirty-first, just to have a discussion about the response letter, and then I think she was gonna do a report on kind of the status of, of their investigation.
Yeah, she has to come in and see us and talk about it, so, you know, we had the letter. Uh, we could discuss it next week if we want to, or we could wait until the sixth and have a presentation from them.
Well, I, 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 I'm not sure which would be better, quite frankly, but, but I think we do need to discuss the letter because what's happened is, 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 uh, there are a number of activities that are going on, uh, that could be, could clearly be duplicates of what we're doing.
Absolutely.
And we've gotta sort things out, and maybe before going down a path, we need to be informed, because it's, it's kind of tough for us to be paying our engineers to do X and then contributing money over here, and they both do X, so, uh, so I think it's important that we have this conversation.
Well, I think it might also be clear or important just to be able to say Harwich is in charge of Harwich as far as wastewater goes. If Pleasant Bay Alliance wants to do something to help us, that's fine, but they're not the ones driving the ship, quite frankly.
I understand that, but that's why I think it's necessary to have a conversation.
That's why we went through and did the whole CWMP, um, et cetera, et cetera, so. Whatever your pleasure, if you wanna talk about the letter next week, we can. We should agenda it though, cause we're getting a bit of our field here, so.
Yeah, I think it's important to agenda it.
So we'll do that next week, that's fine. We can do that, we can invite her in to be here, would be great. Okay? Any else, Chris?
That concludes my, uh, comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Selectment's report, Janelle?
Um, I would just like to report that I went to see the, um, Lion King at Montmore Regional Middle School this weekend, and it was absolutely phenomenal.
I heard it was great.
They do an amazing job at that program, so, just wanted to tell people.
Good. Michael?
Nothing.
Okay, Julie? Oh, you come up with things, don't worry. Angelo?
No.
Okay, so look, the one thing I have on here is next week, according to our, you know, policies and procedures, uh, is the week, or the time we will reorganize the board, um, so everybody gets a position. Uh, there's the chairman, vice chairman, uh, clerk, and two members of the, um, the interview committee. Um, I do, and by the way, let me point out that we're meeting next Tuesday, not Monday, because of Memorial Day, so you should know that. Um, I do wanna point out though that, in, in a, you know, I think I've been pretty vocal about it, and you can chime in Angelo if you like or not, but, um, you know, I will not be seeking reelection after, you know, my term is up in the next year. Um, Angelo can speak for himself if he wants to, you know, whenever. But I do think, you know, the three folks that are, I'll say relatively new, um, it's gonna be a year when you're gonna be able to get some experience, and I think you should welcome that opportunity. And I think we're here as the senior folks to sort of help, so I guess I messaged there in the flying week, you guys ought to figure out who wants to do what, and, um, you know, we'll support you however you wanna do that. But I think it's a, it's a good, um, there's a lot to learn, obviously, I, you know, I think all of us learn something every time we have a meeting, every time we do something. But there's a whole process to go through and things you need to do and don't do, and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. But we're gonna, I think we're gonna get out of the way and say, hey, you guys need to start putting, you know, your own management team together here, basically, because, um, after next year, you're gonna end up with two new people, additional new people on the board, and, uh, it wouldn't be good not to have some folks with some experience, you know, running meetings and those types of things, and, you know, giving direction and guidance and, and all those types of things, and working with staff, you know, on, on agendas and those, those types of things, so. Uh, we look, I look forward to that next week, and I think, you know, you folks ought to have a little discussion amongst yourselves. Not an official meeting, uh, but you might send an email or have a discussion, or have a cup of coffee somewhere and figure out, you know, uh, what you think the direction of, of this, uh, committee should be for the following year.
I hate to agree with you, but I agree.
You can if you want to, so.
Is that about the, no, I'm not gonna say.
You're gonna nail them down.
I better stop.
Okay, all right.
You're gonna mess together.
Yeah, and I remind everybody is next Monday is Memorial Day at nine forty in Brooks Park. Um, is the, the Harwich Memorial Day ceremony, uh, soon posted and advertised, and, um, hope folks can attend, hope the weather cooperates, that's always the big issue, but the town band will be there, and, um, it'll be a good event. Always good to feel patriotic. Any else? So our first live meeting is concluded, uh, we are done, so meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.